Need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Mr. President, if there's no adjustments, modifications for the agenda I move we approve at the 33 July 8.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Purchase order. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just two quick things. Council will notice that, in fact, it threw me in the sticker shock when I first saw it. Your purchase order this week is slightly more than $1.1 million, but of that amount there's $995,006, which is the release of the cash escrow for Archer's Rock, which you authorized last week. So the true purchase order was $126,787, which is more in line with what we're used to. But you'll also see on the final page of...
So Archer's Rock was a cash?
Yes. That was actually a separate escrow account.
But it was cash?
Yes. So we were releasing that at council's approval.
We received that in the settlement.
We did.
Put it into the account.
It was a surety bond that we put into a separate account. So that's why that shows up on the purchase order log. You'll also see the third from the bottom on the very last page, a disbursement in the amount of $120 for registration of our x-ray machines in the judicial center. We received notification last week from West Virginia Department of Occupational Health that all of our, every x-ray machine in every judicial center in the state of West Virginia has to be registered. So it was a one-time registration fee for both machines of $120.
What's that mean?
Just means that they're registered with the state of West Virginia as x-ray machines. But we also have to post signs now as you come into the judicial center that says x-ray machines in use, and all of our court security officers that are assigned duty on the x-ray machines have to wear the little radiation monitors. And I talked to Mike and it's not really an issue because they're rotated through anyway. But you'll see some additional expenses on it as we, because we have ordered the signs, we have ordered the little detector.
Well, I assume the machines are checked annually for...
By the manufacturer. And we contacted the manufacturer and the manufacturer said, well, when we put them in, we were actually a little surprised that the state of West Virginia didn't require that the signs be posted. So they're well aware of it. Nothing to be concerned about, but you may see some additional expenses for that.
And if any of the correctional officers glow in the dark, we'll know.
We will know.
Anything else? There is no internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
Change in status, new hire recommendation received from Jen Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Logan Murphy as a part-time 911 call taker with an hourly rate of $19.00 effective July 8, 2021. So that's one of our call takers, huh?
Yes, sir.
New hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Roger Mueller as a drug screening technician with an annual salary of $32,971, effective July 13, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following employees. Trent Heckman is being promoted from lieutenant to captain with a salary increase from $66,754 to $70,547. Trampis Boyd is being promoted from corporal to sergeant with a salary increase from $59,062 to $63,916, effective July 1, 2021. Richard Stearman is being promoted from deputy to corporal with a salary increase from $56,289 to $59,622, effective July 1, 2021. Lori Cackley is receiving an increase based on evaluation of duties and office restructuring. Her salary is increasing from $39,690 to $44,000, effective July 1, 2021. Marcia Kelly is receiving an increase based on evaluation and duties of office restructuring. Her salary is increasing from $35,673 to $43,000, effective July 1, 2021. Jason Scales is receiving an increase based on evaluation of duties and office restructuring. His salary is increasing from $39,323 to $43,003, effective July 1, 2021. Letter resignation received from the animal control for Tyler Lewis, effective July 13, 2021. Letter resignation received from the animal control for John Verdet, effective July 11, 2021. Letter resignation received from the tax office for Kimberly Schaefer, effective July 15, 2021. Any questions on the change in status? And I did talk to Mr. Davis about the changes at the sheriff's department, if there was money in there to make these changes on the restructuring, and there is a position that has been vacated and will not be filled, I guess.
It's probably not at the level that it was.
Okay. So there is money, funds to do that. Any other concerns? If not, we're going on to minutes everyone was present for June 24, 2021. Any changes or corrections on those? The other thing is on the county council calendars, we'll be back in the chambers next Thursday on the 15th at 9:30 a.m. Boards and commissions, we have fire board tonight at 6:30. We have Monday on the 12th at 2:30 p.m. LAPC, 5:00 p.m. Water District, 6:00 p.m. Fireman Protection, 6:00 p.m. Airport Authority. Tuesday, the 13th, we have a 2:00 p.m. Central Dispatch 911 Advisory Board, which I got sent an email on that, so I'm not so sure if that one's been moved or not. And Wednesday, the 14th, at 9:30 a.m. Development Authority, 6:00 p.m. Roundhouse. Any changes or corrections on boards and commissions? One of the other things too on boards and commissions while we're doing this, if we could, I was talking to Councilperson Gokenaire about taking over the 911 advisory board for me, and he expressed interest that he would be interested in that. Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay. All right. So we'll, Mr. Gokenaire will do that, and I'll forward you the email that I got to make sure. And Penny, can you tell Tracy to make sure Jen knows?
No, ma'am.
All right. Bond release, we have a bond release for Chandler's Glen, file number BCP, file number 2104-161. Engineering department has made that recommendation and all the paperwork is in Doug for the bond release for the HOA and all that stuff?
Yes, sir. It is good for that, so.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Doug? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No, ma'am.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Purchase order. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just two quick things. Council will notice that, in fact, it threw me in the sticker shock when I first saw it. Your purchase order this week is slightly more than $1.1 million, but of that amount there's $995,006, which is the release of the cash escrow for Archer's Rock, which you authorized last week. So the true purchase order was $126,787, which is more in line with what we're used to. But you'll also see on the final page of...
So Archer's Rock was a cash?
Yes. That was actually a separate escrow account.
But it was cash?
Yes. So we were releasing that at council's approval.
We've received that in the settlement.
We did.
Put it into the account.
It was a surety bond that we put into a separate account. So that's why that shows up on the purchase order log. You'll also see the third from the bottom on the very last page, a disbursement in the amount of $120 for registration of our x-ray machines in the judicial center. We received notification last week from West Virginia Department of Occupational Health that all of our, every x-ray machine in every judicial center in the state of West Virginia has to be registered. So it was a one-time registration fee for both machines of $120.
And what's that mean?
Just means that they're registered with the state of West Virginia as x-ray machines. But we also have to post signs now as you come into the judicial center that says x-ray machines in use, and all of our court security officers that are assigned duty on the x-ray machines have to wear the little radiation monitors. And I talked to Mike and it's not really an issue because they're rotated through anyway. But you'll see some additional expenses on it as we, because we have ordered the signs, we have ordered the little detector.
Well, I assume the machines are checked annually for...
By the manufacturer. And we contacted the manufacturer and the manufacturer said, well, when we put them in, we were actually a little surprised that the state of West Virginia didn't require that the signs be posted. So they're well aware of it. Nothing to be concerned about, but you may see some additional expenses for that.
And if any of the correctional officers glow in the dark, we'll know.
We will know.
Anything else? There is no internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
Change in status, new hire recommendation received from Jen Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Logan Murphy as a part-time 911 call taker with an hourly rate of $19.00 effective July 8, 2021. So that's one of our call takers, huh?
Yes, sir.
New hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Roger Mueller as a drug screening technician with an annual salary of $32,971, effective July 13, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following employees. Trent Heckman is being promoted from lieutenant to captain with a salary increase from $66,754 to $70,547. Trampis Boyd is being promoted from corporal to sergeant with a salary increase from $59,062 to $63,916, effective July 1, 2021. Richard Stearman is being promoted from deputy to corporal with a salary increase from $56,289 to $59,622, effective July 1, 2021. Lori Cackley is receiving an increase based on evaluation of duties and office restructuring. Her salary is increasing from $39,690 to $44,000, effective July 1, 2021. Marcia Kelly is receiving an increase based on evaluation and duties of office restructuring. Her salary is increasing from $35,673 to $43,000, effective July 1, 2021. Jason Scales is receiving an increase based on evaluation of duties and office restructuring. His salary is increasing from $39,323 to $43,003, effective July 1, 2021. Letter resignation received from the animal control for Tyler Lewis, effective July 13, 2021. Letter resignation received from the animal control for John Verdet, effective July 11, 2021. Letter resignation received from the tax office for Kimberly Schaefer, effective July 15, 2021. Any questions on the change in status? And I did talk to Mr. Davis about the changes at the sheriff's department, if there was money in there to make these changes on the restructuring, and there is a position that has been vacated and will not be filled, I guess.
It's probably not at the level that it was.
Okay. So there is money, funds to do that. Any other concerns? If not, we're going on to minutes everyone was present for June 24, 2021. Any changes or corrections on those? The other thing is on the county council calendars, we'll be back in the chambers next Thursday on the 15th at 9:30 a.m. Boards and commissions, we have fire board tonight at 6:30. We have Monday on the 12th at 2:30 p.m. LAPC, 5:00 p.m. Water District, 6:00 p.m. Fireman Protection, 6:00 p.m. Airport Authority. Tuesday, the 13th, we have a 2:00 p.m. Central Dispatch 911 Advisory Board, which I got sent an email on that, so I'm not so sure if that one's been moved or not. And Wednesday, the 14th, at 9:30 a.m. Development Authority, 6:00 p.m. Roundhouse. Any changes or corrections on boards and commissions? One of the other things too on boards and commissions while we're doing this, if we could, I was talking to Councilperson Gokenaire about taking over the 911 advisory board for me, and he expressed interest that he would be interested in that. Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay. All right. So we'll, Mr. Gokenaire will do that, and I'll forward you the email that I got to make sure. And Penny, can you tell Tracy to make sure Jen knows? All right. Bond release, we have a bond release for Chandler's Glen, file number BCP, file number 2104-161. Engineering department has made that recommendation and all the paperwork is in Doug for the bond release for the HOA and all that stuff?
Yes, sir. It is good for that, so.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Doug? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No, ma'am.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Doug.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Mr. President.
If you notice, adjustments, modifications for the agenda I moved we approved at the 3rd of July the 8th.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Purchase order, any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I may, just two quick things. Council will notice that, in fact, it threw me in the sticker shock when I first saw it. Your purchase order this week is slightly more than $1.1 million. But of that amount, there's $995,006, which is the the release of the cash escrow for Archer's Rock, which you authorized last week. So the true purchase order was $126,787, which is more in line with what we're used to. But you'll also see on the final page of-
So Archer's Rock was a cash?
Yes, that was actually a separate escrow account.
But it was cash, huh?
Yes, so we were releasing that at council's approval.
We received that in the settlement, put it into the account.
It was a surety bond that we put into a separate account. So that's, that's why that shows up on the purchase order log. You'll also see the third from the bottom on the very last page, a disbursement in the amount of $120 for registration of our x-ray machines in the judicial center. We received notification last week from West Virginia Department of Occupational Health that all of our, every x-ray machine in every judicial center in the state of West Virginia has to be registered. So it was a one-time registration fee for both machines of $120.
And what's that mean?
Just means that they're registered with the state of West Virginia as x-ray machines. But we also have to post signs now as you come into the judicial center that says x-ray machines in use. And all of our court security officers that are assigned duty on the x-ray machines have to wear the little radiation monitors. And I talked to Mike and it's not really an issue because they're rotated through anyway.
Right.
You'll see some, some additional expenses on as we, because we have ordered the signs, we have ordered the little, the little.
Well, I assume the machines are checked annually for-
By the manufacturer and the main, we contacted the manufacturer and the manufacturer said, well, when we put them in, we were actually a little surprised that the state of West Virginia didn't require that the signs be posted. So they're well aware of it, nothing to be concerned about, but you may see some additional expenses for that.
And if any of the correctional officers glow in the dark, we'll know.
We, we will know that.
Anything else? There is no internal budget revisions?
No, sir.
Changing status, new hire recommendation received from Jen Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Logan Murphy as a part-time 911 call taker with an hourly rate of $19 effective July 8, 2021. So that's one of our call takers, huh?
Yes, sir.
New hire recommendations, recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Roger Mueller as a drug screening technician with an annual salary of $32,971 effective July 13, 2021. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following employees. Trent Heckman is being promoted from lieutenant to captain with a salary increase from $66,754 to $70,547. Trampis Boyd is being promoted from corporal to sergeant with a salary increase from $59,062 to $63,00916 effective July 1, 2021. Richard Steerman is being promoted from deputy to corporal with a salary increase from $56,289 to $59,062 effective July 1, 2021. Lori Cackley is receiving an increase based on evaluations of duties and office restructuring. Her salary is increasing from $39,690 to $44,000 effective July 1, 2021. Marcia Kelly is receiving an increase based on evaluation and duties of office restructuring. Her salary is increasing from $35,673 to $43,000 effective July 1, 2021. Jason Scales is receiving an increase based on evaluation of duties and office restructuring. His salary is increasing from $39,323 to $43,323 effective July 1, 2021. Letter resignation received from the Ambulance Control for Tyler Lewis effective July 13, 2021. Letter resignation received from the Ambulance Control for John Verdet effective July 11, 2021. Letter resignation received from the Tax Office for Kimberly Schaefer effective July 15, 2021. Any questions on the change of status? And I did talk to Mr. Davis about the changes at the Sheriff's Department. If there was money in there to make these changes on the restructuring. And there is a, a position that has been vacated and will not be filled, I guess.
It's probably not at the level that it, that it was.
Okay, so there is money, funds to do that. Any other concerns? If not, we're going on to minutes everyone was present for June 24, 2021. Any changes or corrections on those? The other thing is on the county council calendars. We'll be back in the chambers next Thursday on the 15th at 9:30 a.m. Boards and commissions, we have fire board tonight at 6:30. We have Monday on the 12th at 2:30 p.m. LAPC, 5:00 p.m. Water District, 6:00 p.m. Fireman Protection, 6:00 p.m. Airport Authority. Tuesday, the 13th, we have a 2:00 p.m. Central Dispatch 911 Advisory Board, which I got sent an email on that. So I'm not so sure if that one's been moved or not. And Wednesday, the 14th at 9:30 a.m. Development Authority, 6:00 p.m. Roundhouse. Any changes or corrections on boards and commissions? One of the other things too on boards and commissions while we're doing this, if we could. I was talking to Councilperson Gokenar about taking over the 911 Advisory Board for me. And he expressed interest that he would be interested in that. Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay, alright, so we'll, Mr. Gokenar will do that. And I'll forward you the email that I got to make sure. And Penny, can you tell Tracy to make sure Jen knows? Alright, bond release, we have a bond release for Chandler's Glen. File number BCP, file number 2104-161. Engineering Department has made that recommendation and all the paperwork is in Doug for the bond release for the HOA and all that stuff?
Yes, Sir, there is good for that, so.
Alright, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Doug? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No, ma'am.
Motion been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Thanks Doug. Board and media reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. The only meeting I had this week was Telmon, it was handled by Zoom, which they're just thrilled to have their meetings by Zoom, though they may go to combination Zoom and in-person meetings soon. Actually, the main item, we're having trouble getting members and particularly out of Jefferson County. Jefferson County doesn't seem to want to play. And so Sandy Hamilton, who's Chairman, President, whatever of the local board is going to Jefferson County, I think, next week to talk about something else. She's gonna mention to them, because I suggested, well, if you can't get the county commission involved, go for the municipalities, because, you know, there's some good mayors in the municipalities. And Sandy and I know them all because of Region 9. And go that angle. So she's gonna talk to the county commissioners next week and see if she can get something broken loose on that. And they had reports and it was fairly routine.
Good. One of the things that's been brought to my attention, Mr. Barnhart, is that the Water District is talking about increasing the flow rate for fire suppression from 500 gallons to 1,000 gallons, doubling it. Which 500 gallons meets the criteria from the state of West Virginia. And if that happens from 500 to 1,000 gallons, it expresses concerns about what that does for future growth. Pretty much probably stop everything on the south end. So try to find out what's going on there. I would strongly advise against that.
There's a meeting Monday and-
Okay, alright.
Mr. President, Tracy had a question before, do you want to stay as a member on the 911 Advisory Board?
Do what now?
Do you want to stay as a member on that board?
Nah, I'll give it to Eddie, better fit for that.
You don't want to stay as a member, not for the A, you don't want to be a member of the board either?
Nah, nah. Mr. Wurka?
I had no meetings.
Okay, Mr. Gokenar?
Yes, Sir, sewer district meeting, well, stormwater, I had to leave before the stormwater started so I could get the planning commission. But the sewer district, hookups are beginning to take place in Timberlake now. They've sent the letters out to advising the folks that the system is nearly 100% complete and that they can start making their hookups, and some have.
Some of them are gonna have a hard time.
Some of them will.
I mean, it's gonna be a $20,000 hookup.
Yeah, I know that they're, some of that was discussed with their engineer.
A lot of rock out there.
And then on the planning commission meeting, really one of the, that drew the most attention was the problem I spoke to you a couple of weeks ago with Riverside. But Mr. Roth from the Roth Development Corporation was here and addressed a lot of those issues with the residents. And that, that conversation continued. You know, after, after their meeting, public hearing, they discussed additional things with him outside.
Was it the plan change or the fact that they haven't put in some of the extra?
It was both. There was, there was a good bit of conversation about the plan change, you know, where there's a lot of single-family homes are now, with the major plan changes, we'll be going to townhomes. And they talked and concerned and I understand about the values affecting the single-family homes. But that, that part honestly you can't fix and if they've met all the criteria that's, that's set forth by the planning commission.
What we could do is look at our regulations and try to change those. They're in the rewrite now.
Yes, I, I think it, I think it really needs to be looked at. And, you know, when a developer comes out and lays out a plan and says, this is, this is what your neighborhood's gonna look like. Well, that's what it needs to look like at the end of the day. You know, I, I understand things change maybe in between, but not to that drastic of an amount.
And Eddie and I was talking this morning about that and it's very similar to the Tusker Rose voting thing. You know, this is what we was told it was gonna be like and, and I think that's how the subdivisions, I, I've never liked, I'm gonna call it mixed use, but it's really not. I've never liked townhouses and single families being in the same subdivision myself. I just, I just think they, there's two different subdivisions. But I know our planning commission back 12 years ago was encouraging that. And I know that the, the, probably the national builders prefer that. But I think it's two different subdivisions in my opinion, but that's a rewrite. I talked to, to the planning commission stuff, why they're going to rewrite right now and see. And I also said that one of the things I'd like to see is encourage, I'm gonna call it condominium projects, to where it could be the same as a townhouse project, except everything on the outside is done through the association. So shingles blow off, they match. Siding blows off, it matches. Yards are moot all at the same time and all that stuff. And really at the bottom of the line, it's, it's no, it's, it's a much nicer looking area. But, and it keeps up the values and-
Yeah, the nice, if all the decking was put in, you know, simultaneous rather than this one, this one doesn't, this one does, you know, that kind of stuff.
But you got townhouse projects out there that shingles blow off the roof on one and they patch them in with different color shingles. You know, where if it would be through like a condominium where you turn back around and you, you buy the unit, but everything on the outside is paid through dues. You're, you're gonna pay for it anyway, so why not do it through something like that? And then if it's covered by insurance, then the, then the HOA or dues or whatever dues gets the money from the insurance company to do work.
One thing I have noticed that, you know, my travels like even into Maryland or Virginia, the mixed use that they have, it's usually commercial up front. And then you drive through the commercial area to the townhomes in the back. It's, I don't know if they call them town centers or a form of a town center. So that mixed use seems to fit because it's, you know, it's closer to amenities that they want to see happen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, ma'am. I just wanted to build on what you're saying, that's all.
At a committee meeting with the Parks and Rec, one of the facilities committee to look at, to look at our individual parks and just address issues that need to be taken care of, not only immediate, but perhaps even long-term changes or additions to our, to enhance that park. And then this evening, a meeting with the Morgan Cabin Group to get them started and get ideas on what they want to see in their MOU that they will have with the landmarks. So that each agency will understand their responsibilities and hopefully blend them a little bit better together.
One of the things too, I got an email I gotta respond to over, coming from somebody that has a daughter playing over at Charlotte Prather Park. We own that property, we lease it to them, it was, I think, a hundred-year lease back when Mr. Gene Baker got involved. And that was probably sixty years ago, maybe? It was in the sixties sometime. But anyway, there were some concerns about what was going on. I know that they probably went from 650 girls playing over there back to probably 15 years ago to probably less than 200 or right around 200 now, so I may, I may reach out to them. I may have to go to the board meeting one night and talk to them, see what their plans are. Because with 650 down to 200, the park's being 100-year lives for sure. And I didn't have any formal boards and commission meetings. Any reappointments? Alright, Randy, you're here. Next on our agenda is Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management, request for additional firefighters. Randy, I was right on that telephone line that got hooked on Monday.
This is it. The call was made, they were notified.
I understand.
Actually, they were notified, boys.
I don't think it ripped it apart, but it, they called it. Thanks for doing that on the 4th of July. Or actually, it was a Sunday.
Sunday, yeah.
On the 4th of July weekend, alright. You have a request that you and I talked about, additional firefighter. We've already given you authority to hire two. You went through the interview process. The, this came about because of Back Creek Valley with the Ambulance Authority concerns about staffing issues back there. And so we called a meeting and Randy was there and Eddie was there and Al was there. And I think we all came to the conclusion that we could do it better. And, and then you also brought to our attention that there's, it's hard to hire part-time people right now. And I've talked to Mr. Davis and talked about it, that, that is a concern of mine, that firefighters are part-time or 1250 an hour. I think that's the right figure. And, and, and so, you know, we have, we have a, a part-time employee that was in that meeting that's also the chief of Back Creek Valley, I believe. Or not the chief, he's the-
Assistant chief.
Assistant chief that said, yeah, you know, I'm going to wherever pays me the most money, which is understandable. Alright, so, and that's a good recruiting tool, I think, on part-time staff. And plus, we know with the COVID and, and what we said, with the fire and EMS, so easy to go down to Loudoun County or anywhere else because you're working two, four, 24-hour shifts. Looking, I need to focus my attention on you, but I know he's got a lot in it, as, as always, so. So basically, and you said at that meeting, that you were spending a lot of money on overtime because of the part-time shortage. So really, in the long run, this full-time position will, will save money more, like-
Use those overtime hours, yes.
And if the council will recall, several times last fiscal year through state budget revision, we did have to use that budget with overtime because of those very, very reasons. Part-time employees that were bullied with another fire department elsewhere wouldn't, couldn't show up because they were requested to be by their primary employer or work there. So that has caused us to pay additional overtime.
Well, the other way that were, that came to me during that meeting too is we have the SAFER grant at Baker Heights, which is, expires on February, February 2022.
And we're down to 35% reimprovements.
Right, but that was zero then, we're done in February. So then there'll be an extra person there that we can also help, because we'll only staff that with two at that point in time.
So the dollar savings, I did a little bit of math here. For that one person hiring a full-time firefighter versus having to pay those overtime hours without that person is a savings of $26,563.40.
And how many gray hairs did it save you?
A lot, scheduling, a lot, all the scheduling issues.
Yeah, alright, so, so just as long as everybody understands what we're talking about here. Is during that meeting, and Mr. Costello's in the room, and I'll, I'll turn to you here in a second. But in that meeting, we, we wanted to figure out how we could better serve Back Creek Valley. And it's pretty much, it's twofold, that the fire is probably gonna still look to do 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. But the EMS side would do nine, looking at 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And this way, if you need to get both apparatuses out the door and you need both apparatus to be active, we'll have the staff to deal with. It's gonna be better staffing for you and better staffing for the Ambulance Authority all at the same time.
What's the call line?
Call volume is, is low.
It, it is low, it is minimal. However, on the EMS side, it's, it's stronger, there's more on the EMS side than there is on fire.
I'm thinking it's 300 and some calls a year?
About 350.
About 350, yeah, is an average number.
Yeah, that's on-
That's fire.
On fire.
350 on fire for Back Creek?
Yeah, probably major, I mean-
Because they're getting called, yeah.
Well, and, and most, and I will elaborate, most of those are providing, going outside of our, the first new run area of Back Creek. So in the event there's a structure fire in the Inwood area, you know, they're going there. We're also providing mutual aid service to Morgan County, Prager County, Virginia, or Hedgesville, wherever.
Right, it's mutual aid more, a lot of it. I mean, because Back Creek Valley, man, there's some good, strong people, they put out their own fires, you know, they, they, they put a band-aid on their own toe, you know, all kinds of stuff.
But, but on the other side of it, when there is an event in Back Creek Valley, without that service there, it's a long period of time before we can get that, you know, get that service there. And I think, I'm not going to speak for the ambulance authority, but if there's not a medic crew back there as well, you know, they face those same challenges. If the Inwood crew is out and, you know, the crew has to work for it, it would be bad.
I think one of the other things too, Randy, you gotta look at, that, and I don't need to go too much in detail on this, but someone made this statement to very clear. The people in Back Creek Valley pays the same taxes as everybody else.
Yes.
Right, they deserve the same service.
Yes.
Brian, you got anything to add, real quick?
From the- Well, Brian, get your, another thing about it is when they get dispatched, if they get best dispatched today for an accident with entrapment, the ambulance crew and the, and the fire crew today, one takes the ambulance and the other takes the fire truck. That's what they do and then, and they get there and they do what they gotta do. And hopefully by that time, more folks show up, you know, to help. But it puts a lot on, on that crew to be able to manage that incident with just two people and two pieces of apparatus and-
Especially if it's an entrapment and fire.
Yes, and, and today, you know, last week, I think I told you, there was an accident right there about Guy Mason. That crew was out. Inwood crew was out, so the ambulance came from 97 and Hedgesville to take care of that incident. It takes a while on wet roads.
Especially from 97.
Yeah, wet roads and, you know, it just takes a while and, and that, I think the area's being underserved.
So Brian, tell us a little bit about what the Ambulance Authority wanted to do too. Just about the extra staff member and stuff, and then also the extra crew in Inwood that that ambulances is, is gonna be utilized in Back Creek Valley more so than this side of the mountain.
Well, again, first of all, I want to thank everybody involved in those conversations, Al, Councilman Gokenar yourself, the Chief, Chief Wyon Brenner and Mr. Urban. But what we were looking at is, when this was established in 2013, ambulance authorities run about 7,000 calls, 1,400 transports. We are now, our numbers finished up for the fiscal year, at 14,000 calls, over 7,000, almost 7,500 transports. So that's, that's a lot in that eight-year window, because you're developing what you're doing and it's only, the county's growing, things are going, they're gonna go through the roof. So what we're looking to do at this point is we are doing expansion project in the south. Afford us the opportunity to put a second unit in the south end of the county with, you know, hoping that the education process for paramedics and things catch up with us. Right now, we're looking at a model of advanced EMTs, which is at the mid-level. Not quite paramedic, but stronger than EMT. And we can help fill a second units in the south end there in Inwood. Putting our own ALS crew, we do have a committed paramedic that has stepped up and said, hey, I would like to take on that position when we man that and, you know, the fire dance their piece. So our hope is to get that ALS unit in Back Creek regularly, you know, since we did lose our paramedic over a year ago to Inwood. So you have growth coming in the south, of course. You have a stable paramedic going into the Back Creek area, which gives them the coverage that you see in all the other places. I wish I had an answer for rotational stuff that Councilman Gokenar talked about. That's, you know, you look at any EMS business throughout the nation, that's how you do it. How do you shift your pieces so that you get the maximum amount of effect when you need it? And that's, that's a management nightmare sometimes, because you just keep picking them off right down the road as they come.
But the Ambulance Authority is talking about redundancy, so trying to, trying to get work on that. But mainly, I, I don't want to be too long, but, so naturally, the Ambulance Authority is, is, has encouraged- as we, you've spoken about eight different times to the board about how we can do it better. And Randy's saying the same thing. And we, as a council, the last time we approved those two positions, we said no more. And here we are again. So, but, but you're telling us we could save money. So, and then I just talked to Mr. Brianing about getting on the association next meeting to talk about paid staff. So.
One of the things I hope we can do, and we, we are beginning a new recruitment team that'll be out, job fairs and things, some of the things that we talked about, you know, is how the citizens need to look at public safety as an insurance policy. And, you know, that is, is that's there for you when you need it. Most of the times you don't, it's good to know that it's there. Hopefully what they'll understand is eventually, as you guys make changes, as they've done with legislation, to where ultimately the county can look at paid staff 24 hours a day and how that's funded. You know, hopefully we begin that conversation and the education piece out there. We know there's going to be people that are totally against it. We got that. And that's a personal thing, but hopefully we can educate them on the benefits and how to look at this differently as something that they need. So, you know, hopefully over time, they'll, they'll be comfortable with that. They'll support whatever initiatives put forward. And we can build a public safety piece that grows and helps the community.
All right. Thank you, Brian. All right, Randy.
I also want to point out that, that Back Creek years ago was the second company that stepped up to the plate and said, we'll take all the help you can give us. If you can give us 24/7 help now, we'll take it.
Tomorrow.
So, you know, certainly they acknowledge the need for career firefighters there aside.
To assist, to assist the volunteers. I think one of the things, the biggest educational piece we have to do is educate the people what a volunteer does. A lot of them don't understand what a volunteer firefighter does, how much time it takes. And I think that's the first part is, is saying, most people don't. I had somebody come up to me and I started talking about volunteer firefighters and said, you mean they do it for nothing? I said, yeah, it's volunteer, right? I had no idea. But anyway, anybody have any?
Volunteers give a lot. I just want to, I want to go on the record saying that they give a lot.
Their families give up a lot.
And, and they do, and with the required, the training requirements that's set forth from the state to be a volunteer firefighter, those training requirements and certifications get more lengthy and stronger, you know, every year. And, and I see why it's there, you know, because we need to do what we need, what we're doing to do it safely. So, but the downside of that is, you know, volunteers, when a new volunteer walks in the door and you say you've got to take a couple, you know, X amount of hours, you know, and it could be in hundreds of hours of training before you can get on a piece of fire apparatus. A lot of people don't have that time.
Right, right. Today's slave livelihood doesn't allow you to have that flexible time. You know, back years ago, the, the head of the household could work one, one job. Now they're working two jobs. The spouse is working two jobs. So kids are in travel ball and doing this and doing that and, and, you know. Kids are, kids are different today than what they were, you know, years and years ago. They require a lot of time.
We didn't have those opportunities.
We didn't have those opportunities and we, and there wasn't so many things out there trying to get to, to get you on the, on the bad side of life neither.
They're good opportunities.
Yeah. So I need a motion to, and you already have a candidate out of the last pool.
We have, we do have a list that we created out of the last testing that we did, we did hire two. They started July 1st, actually we hired three, actually one as a replacement, two additional. So we did hire three out of that pool. We did have seven candidates that were eligible for hire out of that pool.
A selection. All right. Entertain a motion for, to add a, an additional firefighter.
The move, sir.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion passes.
Do we have the money? How we doing?
What, what my intent is, is to leave the budget where it's at now.
Because of overtime.
And, and we'll, we'll continue to monitor it. And then when, and if the, if the need comes, then we'll use that budget with the additional monies that are needed. We may have a little bit more in there for furs and health insurance, but for now, I'm going to use salaries the way they are. And I'll take care of that as part of the state budget, as state budget.
So Randy, are we thinking that this person, the one that we just gave you approval to do, will be the second person for Back Creek?
Yes.
And then, and then the third person from Baker Heights, when we go to two, will become another full-time person to backfill some of the part-time stuff? Well, plus it's going to take more than one to fill the second position in Back Creek.
Right. Because that's a 60-hour a week, or 60 man-hours.
Right.
That's per shift. And we're, we're hiring for a 40-hour position. So there still is some part.
Back there for right now. Okay. All right. But I guess, yeah, so you got, you'll have all that worked out.
The only question I have is when will the council?
Approve for, for the hiring? I'd say immediately.
There, yes, sir. Okay.
All right. And then you have to get with Brian and talk to him about the EMS side and try to get everybody on the same page and.
Another expense that would return out here is.
Yes.
It's about, that's about $3,000.
You and I have discussed that. We, we, next week we'll declare unencumbered fund balance for cold severance. And then following, we'll do unencumbered fund balance for general fund. We'll, we can move a little bit of money around within there.
So this, this will pretty much for sure put us over $2 million. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, you're running early if you want to do. I have three matters for your.
Yes, sir. Let's roll. Let me decorate, uh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Three matters for the council's consideration. The first is the declaration of surplus shotguns. If you'll recall, back in early June, Sheriff Harmon and Trent Peckman appeared before the council requesting that they be allowed to dispose of 38 surplus shotguns in an, in exchange go to 40-millimeter less lethal launchers that launches beanbags. And the council gave their approval. Since then, our court security has worked with the sheriff's department. Sheriff's department has donated four of the best shotguns that they have to, to the judicial center, to our court security, as well as the less lethal rounds that go with those. Not anticipating any need, but with everything that goes, goes on across the country, it certainly wouldn't hurt to have those in your armory over there. So instead of 38 shotguns, we now have 34 shotguns. We've removed two Remington 870 Express Magnums and two Malsburg 500As.
These are old 12-gauge.
They're old 12-gauge. Yes, sir. So in your packet, it's, your read ahead will say 38 because we just got the serial numbers yesterday. But in your signature package is the declaration of surplus property for 34 shotguns to be disposed of in accordance with applicable laws and policies. Once that, and, and if the council approves that, then we'll put it out for, for bid. We'll, we'll do it probably through sealed bids. And then that money would be applied to the 40-millimeter beanbag launchers.
So they'd be sold individually?
No, sir. They would be sold as a group.
What are you talking about? Maybe doing on a bid with a minimum?
Correct. Yeah, we'll set a minimum.
Do you know what shape they're in?
They're all in good shape except for two. There are two that have, that's defective that would need to be either parted out or repaired. But everything else is in pretty good shape. It's used primarily on the range.
Wouldn't be good to have another shotgun in your house.
I was thinking 34. One in every corner?
Yeah.
So I'm requesting that the county declare, the council declare these 38 shotguns as surplus property and give me authorization to dispose of them in accordance with our West Virginia laws and regulations.
34?
34. Entertain a motion.
Sir, I make a motion that 34 shotguns as listed here be considered surplus and be disposed of in accordance with the laws.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Bid recommendation for fire alarm service and maintenance.
Yes, sir. As the council's aware, on Thursday, June 24th, you opened bids for fire alarm and sprinkler testing. We received four bids prior to the closing date and time, and all four companies did participate in the mandatory pre-bid conference. The bids were reviewed by Jack Lang, facilities director, Tracy McForman, procurement coordinator, and me. We agreed that all four bids met the minimum qualifications that's set forth in the RFP. We are recommending that the, it's a one-year contract that actually would begin July 1st. Recommend that the annual fire alarm and sprinkler testing contract be awarded to Patriot Fire and Security LLC out of Winchester, Virginia, that submitted the lowest responsible bid of $6,450 annually.
This is a one-year bid with any options?
It's a one-year contract with the option for two out-years. And we have, BFP International is the current contractor, but prior to that, Patriot Fire and Security did have the contract. So we do have experience with them and they, they were very good.
Okay. Entertain a motion on the bid recommendation.
President, make the motion. We accept the recommendation. Patriot Fire and Security LLC has submitted the lowest responsible bid amount of $6,450 annually.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion?
Is there any potential of them increasing the fee for overtime or extra things or anything?
No. The only, the only thing that could change it, and we've talked to them about this, is we need to address the fire suppression system at 7113, which is not included in the RFP. So sometime, hopefully within the next, during this contract here, we'll be adding those to the contract.
All right. Bid recommendation for the generator service.
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
There you go.
Thank you, Jim.
Also, on Thursday, June 24th, we opened bids for the generator maintenance and service for the five emergency generators located in the county. We've received four bids prior to the closing date and time. Again, all four vendors had attended the mandatory pre-bid conference. Once again, Jack, Tracy, and I reviewed the bids. After some discussion, it was noted that the lump sum annual maintenance price from Curtis Power Solutions, which came in at $4,200 annually, is slightly lower than Fidelity Power Solutions. But their after-hours and travel rates from Fidelity is more favorable. This is especially important because unfortunately, we do have to call in the vendor, not regularly, but periodically. For example, just this past weekend, we had, we had problems with the generator. We had to call in the generator company.
Well, last Thursday, we had problems with the fire alarm.
We did. So when considering the annual generator maintenance as well as the standard labor rate, the after-hours labor rate, the holiday labor rate, and the fact that Curtis Power Solutions is located in Fredericksburg, Virginia, and they're going to charge us $1.50 per mile to travel from Fredericksburg to here, whereas Fidelity is in Frederick County, Maryland, and they have no travel rate charge. It's the committee's opinion that when considering everything, Fidelity Power is the lowest responsible bidder, and that's who, that's who we're recommending.
They're cheaper all across here.
Yeah. And they have had the contract in the past, and they, and once again, they've done a good job for us.
Entertain a motion on the bid recommendation for generator service and maintenance.
President, I move we accept the Fidelity Power Solutions bid for the maintenance and prevent maintenance.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We'll take a break.
We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Tim Ziyath, Community Correction Director, Home Confinement and Recovery Services. Update. I don't know if I can get any longer or not, Tim. All your, all your, everything that you're involved in these days.
Well, I'm here, I'm here to give you an update on, on my programs, the Home Confinement Program, Day Report Center, and the Recovery Resource Center. I'm gonna start with Home Confinement. That'll probably be short and sweet. Home Confinement Program continues to, to run smoothly. Continue to receive referrals from reports. There are eighty-seven offenders currently under supervision. It jumped up to ninety-five a few weeks ago, had a few drop back off, but we're currently staffed to provide appropriate supervision to, to a max of a hundred offenders. So we're really close to tipping those scales. We're budgeted to hire another Home Confinement officer, and my, my plan is to, is to proceed with that, maybe effective August first. But for now, we have eighty-seven under supervision. There are ten pending cases. I'll just review the, the finances for that department again. I've, I've shared this with you before, but in 2018, when we started, we received seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars in payments. Jail cost would have been eight hundred, eight thousand. In 2019, we received ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars in payments. Jail cost would have been one million, four hundred nineteen thousand. In 2020, we, we received seventy-three thousand dollars, seventy, seventy-three thousand, seventy-five dollars in payments. Jail cost would have been one point nine million. And so far, in 2021, in January to date, we've received forty-four thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars in payments. Jail cost would have been one point two million already. So the program is very obviously saving the taxpayers' account a lot of money in jail costs.
So it seems like the payments being received is proportionally different percentage-wise?
It varies.
Because it's on their income?
We don't, we don't require payments for people who are unemployed, or people who live on a fixed income. And the numbers of, of people under supervision who work versus those that don't, it fluctuates all the time.
Right. Because we're not wanting to send them in a further depression mode, right?
I'm sorry.
I mean, we're, we're always there to, to, to work with someone to, to try to keep them up in spirit, to not to try to beat them down and go and spiral down in a hole.
That's right.
I know a lot of times we're in home confinement, not only are we saving jail costs, but we're also keeping the people employed a lot of times.
Yeah, the Home Confinement officers are not just enforcing the terms and conditions. They're, they're really, they kind of act as quasi-case managers to some degree. They, they work with some of the case managers at Day Report Center. Any offenders under supervision who are, are tested positive for substances are, are lined up with treatment and required to engage in treatment. They certainly support employment. I mean, at some time, they, they transport them regularly, but it happens. Somebody needs a ride to a, to a, to work one day with his car broken down, or whatever. They assist in a, in a variety of ways like that. We want to support them in the community and, and help them be successful. You know, our mission is to try to, to keep these people out of jail while enforcing these terms and conditions and holding them accountable.
And it must, like you said, it must be working well for the, the judicial branch to, to endorse it and to have possibly as many as ninety-seven participants here before on.
It appears to me that everyone's satisfied with the services being provided.
You might have anything to add?
No, I, I, I appreciate, you know, your leadership on this home confinement. You're, okay, you're saving, you're saving a lot of money, but at the same time, you're keeping families together. It gives them an opportunity to get their lives straightened out. They're held accountable, and that's what needs to be. That's what people want. They want them to be held accountable. So I think you're doing a great job. You and your staff.
Thank you.
One of the things that we did, well, back when you took it over, I think there was five participants. The judicial branch didn't, wasn't, didn't have confidence in the system. And there's two reasons we did that. We did that to encourage them to use it and to give us, give us, trust us, and, and, and it also freed up people from the Sheriff's Department to do law enforcement rather than home confinement.
Sure.
I'd like to point out that Mike Lang and Tim both did really good jobs of recruiting and hiring. Unfortunately, Mike hires really good people, then they come to work for Tim.
Yeah, I see, I see that interchange going on.
Um, but then, Tim does such a good job with training, that now, VA Center has now started cherry picking. We lost two, two now, home confinement officers to VA Center.
Is that right?
So, you know, unfortunately, some of the other outside public agencies are recognizing the caliber of beliefs that, that these folks have in their, their hiring.
So you're saying we need to add a non-compete clause?
Maybe. Which says something for the caliber of folks that.
It does. It does. And you can't stop someone from going from county employee to federal. But, all right.
Day Report Center is still, still staying very busy. I can't even believe I'm, I'm even saying this, but it's, it's not gonna be, this new building is wonderful, and it provided us space, but I'm not even kidding you. In, in, in a couple of minutes, I'm, I'm gonna come and tell you we're, we're close to the capacity. That's just gonna happen.
Right. We knew that.
It's not gonna be ten years from now.
No.
But, but we're, we're currently.
And back, back up a little bit, when, when I talked to Josh, probably right when it got done, I said, Josh, you need to start figuring on a, a two-story addition, because by the time it gets done, you'd be, you'd be full.
And county is doing up a ground.
And we, we said that, I mean, we planned that building to have an addition on the east, west side of it.
There are two hundred and, we served a total of two hundred and sixty-three participants in June. There's currently two fifty-five active. We're actually now staffed. I'm, I'm trying real hard to stay ahead of this. We've gotten behind before. We're staffed to provide services to three hundred at the moment. So we're, we're in good shape, and the new staff.
And just eight months ago, you were using that white one-ninety some.
Yeah, we've grown, we've grown rapidly in the last six months.
Right.
Yeah.
It grew rapidly and still kept the quality? That's important.
That's very important. The, the quality of that, I'm, I'm not as concerned about quantity as I am quality. It's important to me to, to maintain that. I'm doing some other work here in the background to, to continue to maintain that improvement.
Okay.
Um, I wanna share a little bit of drug screening data with you. I'm gonna compare January first through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, with January first through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. I'm not gonna give you twenty, twenty figures, because the COVID skewed all those numbers. But, uh, January first, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, we conducted six thousand, seven hundred fifty-two drug screens. Two thousand, six hundred fourteen of them were positive for some sort of illegal substance, non-prescribed substance. Sixty-one percent were negative. During the same period of time, twenty twenty-one, we've done eight thousand, fifty-three drug screens, and we went from thirty-nine percent positive to twenty-six percent positive and seventy-four percent negative, which is a significant improvement. And I attribute that to, I mean, it's, we're almost five years in now, and.
That's a great stat, Tim.
Learning curves in place and how we, we approach each individual, but that's a decent improvement.
That's a great stat.
Right. THC was the number one drug that, that we received positive tests for, followed by fentanyl, followed by cocaine.
Now, there's drugs always being created to skirt testing and stuff. So I guess we're staying up to date on the new stuff that's going out and coming in, or all that old crap?
Yep. The, the labs are, are trying to stay, stay ahead. The, the drugs tend to stay ahead of, of the testing, but, um, this, this drug they call boot molly, which is, it's, it's a designer stimulant that floats around.
See, when you say molly, I think that's, it's grease. It's an additive in grease.
Yeah, they call it molly. They call it boot. Boot, I think, is the most common term, and, and it's becoming more and more prevalent.
Usually we put a boot inside of a tire.
Or on your foot, right?
It's actually not part of our standard panel that we test for, because it's, it's, it's fairly expensive to, to test. So usually, when, when somebody using it, it becomes evident pretty quickly. So we, 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 we test the individuals that appear to be using it, or maybe they're suspicious for this reason or that.
So you testimony when you, when you, when you see the sign of?
Yeah, if, if we added that to every test, it would significantly increase my cost.
Right.
So I gotta, I gotta be careful with that, but.
And out of those eight thousand some drug screens, you, you're getting paid to do some of those now?
Oh, yeah. Quite, quite a few of them. The, the DHR, we've contracted the DHR, we get reimbursed for, for all that cost. So, yeah, some of that money's coming back in. Drug screening is my, my biggest expense. I mean, just, just a couple alone is three dollars and fifty cents. Do that math for eight thousand screening in six months, just a couple.
And if the council will recall, late to the last fiscal year, Tim got notification from Heidi that they had some additional monies that were available to us, which was underspent monies from some of the other DRCs. If you remember, he went out and stocked up on, yeah, drug testing.
Right, and actually.
So he used, I mean, that one time.
Right.
Cash flow, he was using it for drug testing supplies and things like that.
Sure. Well, when we started talking to Ruth Phillips almost six years ago, you know, people that's in the audience hear me saying this all the time, but we told Ruth that we wanted to be the best in, in the region, and within two years, we were. And they've been people of their word. They said if they had money left over, that they would be willing to help out, and they have, year after year. A lot, a lot of money.
Yeah. Heidi, if you did it for us.
Yes.
Just, just, just not even including our, our annual funding, additional funding that they've given us exceeds, exceeds two hundred thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, yeah, easy.
Money that they.
Plus the vans, some of those vans came in with extra money. Right.
Yeah. So, so the Day Report Center, we're, we're still rocking and rolling over there. There's a couple of, of grant programs that we've, we've applied for that we're waiting to receive word. If we're awarded those grants, we'll, we'll be able to expand into the juvenile realm much more significantly than we are now.
Some of those are big grants.
I'm sorry?
Some of those are big grants.
Yeah, three and five-year grants. Any questions on Day Report Center activity?
I, I think it's important to note, and Tim kind of brushed over, it was five years ago about this time of the year, that this council directed me to go to Charleston, and he would be sub, and he would be in traction, so he asked for permission to start running the DRC.
Right.
So this is the progress that you've made in five short years.
Are they aware of that?
Oh, yeah.
Like, must they have not been in Mexico?
Actually, when's, when's the, the meeting of all of the?
Yeah, so there, there, the DRC directors' meetings happen quarterly, and I volunteered to host the meeting that will be held in September. I, I can't think of the date off the top of my head. I'll let you all know. But the, the directors will be invited up here for the DRC director meeting, and they'll get a good, to see our, our facility. The, I had a site review done a few weeks ago by some DJCS staff, and, and they told me, as well as the, the state drunk coordinator, Nick Lepwitch, he travels to all the DRCs in the states as well, in the state as well. And I've been told by multiple people that this is by far the nicest center in the state.
Well, and, and we talked about that. It's early on, that, that, you know, some people would use the terminology of institution. Well, that's the last word you want to use. Nor do you want your facility to feel like an institution. You want it to feel like it, it's a welcoming place to go to get help. Right? And, and we've always focused on that. Dr. Harden's on Mountaineer Recovery has focused on that, and we want it to be warm and receiving. But at the same time, I know Tim Ziyath and staff, if they try to skirt the, the rules and regulations, they're going back to jail very quickly. And that's the way it needs to be to, to keep the integrity up.
Yeah. Like I said, I'll, I'll say it again, that it's, it's important to me that the community knows that this is not a get-out-of-jail-free program. These folks need to be held accountable because they're broken involved. It's just a, a much more common sense way of, 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 of holding them accountable by allowing them an opportunity to show up, as we've directed them to show up and engage in treatment and get and stay clean. You know, they're not gonna be provided that sort of service at the jail. It's gonna be very expensive. This is far cheaper, forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents a day versus thirteen dollars and change a day. That's the cost difference. That's for one person. We're, we're saving billions of dollars and making sure that these folks get right and stay right. There's a lot of value.
I can easily say that the money that your departments are saving the county would pay for that building that we just finished in two years.
One.
One year.
One.
Okay.
Yep. Recovery Resource Center, there are, so year to the January to date, there have been ninety-seven people that have contacted the Resource Center and successful, many more have contacted the Resource Center, but ninety-seven have successfully gotten to a program as a result of their contact with the staff down there. Twenty-two in the detox, eighteen into inpatient programs, eight M A T programs, a variety of other programs as well, with ninety-seven total. There have been seven hundred and ninety phone consultations held, sixty-seven individuals that have been our hand-trained. They continue to hold approximately eight meetings a week, for a total of one thousand, six hundred ninety-three people in attendance. Two grant programs right now that are being run for the Resource Center. I'm gonna tell you first about the quick response team. I, I met with, with Bill Kearns yesterday. That grant was gonna be submitted for renewal, and we expect it to be renewed. But since, since we began last October, let me give you overdose data first. These are just county numbers. My person at the city that used to give me numbers, apparently retired. I don't get numbers from them anymore. For county, fiscal year nineteen twenty, there were five hundred and ten total overdose calls. Forty-two of them resulted in death. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one, there were six hundred and thirty-one overdose calls. Fiscal year 2021, there were 631 overdose calls, 48 resulted in death. So it's been an increase. Probably mostly attributed to the heroin doesn't have opioids in it anymore. It's not, it's not morphine based heroin anymore, it's fentanyl. And it's extraordinarily dangerous drug. That's what's in the heroin now, so many more, more people are overdosing and dying from it unfortunately. But the quick response team, when they started last October, they've now knocked on 282 doors.
That's a lot.
Out of those 282 doors that they've knocked on, there have been 122 overdose survivors that they've connected with. Out of those 122 survivors that they've connected with, 48 of them successfully entered into a treatment program. That's 43%. And I can't believe that number, but that's, that's the data that we have. There's also been 33 family members that they've connected with, who have stayed in touch with them and, you know, opened themselves up for a person to some educate. A lot of family members don't, don't understand addiction. They don't, they don't know what to look for, they don't know what to do. They just need some support, they need it here. So there's a lot of value there as well.
Well, the biggest thing is, Tim, we've been talking about is a little bit is the trauma that, that the children go through, right? With both parents using. They become the parents and as early as 10 years old, right? They're, they're the parents and they're the ones that may not be getting the meal at the end of the day because of addiction.
So it's interesting that you bring that up because one of the things that I wanted to highlight in regard to the JOTIP program, let me jump over there, there's a point I want to make, piggybacking off what you just said. This JOTIP program is juvenile opioid treatment intervention program. These staff were hired, they started right before COVID started. And the purpose of this grant was to allow these staff to go into schools to facilitate substance abuse curriculum, identify high risk kids and engage with those kids and hopefully their families even outside of the school setting. COVID closed the schools down, they weren't able to do much. It was very disappointing for quite a while. Well, they started getting back into schools in February. So what is that, five, six months? It's going really well, it's going really well. They have, they have now gotten into Tomahawk Elementary, Eagle School Elementary, Marksburg High, Muslin High, Springville High, and Higginfield High. They have, where's my total number? Darn it. 109 students they've interacted with at Tomahawk, 42 at Eagle School, 260, 788 was the total, I didn't write it down, I don't know why. 788 students they've engaged with. According to SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Association, one out of every eight kids in our country has a parent who actively abuses substances. So there's kids who are watching their parents do this. They're basically being taught by their parent that.
Right.
You know, so roughly 100 of the kids that they've interacted with in this school, in these schools, have parents who they're watching use. And that's just an interesting stat there to think about. They're not doing generic work in these schools, they're actually connecting with kids that, and what they're sharing with them. And both of these girls that they go into, it's Chatsity, Whittington and Nicole Robertson, are two staff that do this. Both are in recovery and they both openly share their own stories of addiction and now recovery. Coach Chalice, Marksburg High School football coach, was so impressed with what they did with his health class at Marksburg High that he invited them to go, to go back and talk to the football team, which they did. And they just continue to make connection after connection. They called me several times recently and said, we gotta, most recently it was Timber Ridge. Some staff member of Timber Ridge found out about what they're doing in the schools in Burke County and invited them out there to do this at Timber Ridge.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, so they're going to be doing that. They're already on the schedule for Hedgesville High and Marksburg High this coming school year to go in and continue. It's, it's pretty awesome. See your wheels spinning there.
We have, we have a meeting night too for, for the kids that want to come.
Oh, yes, Thursday evenings. There, there, so there's a youth group that meets Thursdays from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. It started with just a couple of kids and now there's a regular 11 or 12 attendees to that group, which I'm very pleased with. I want to continue to see that grow when I can.
Right.
Probably going to have to get a more than one group.
Well, the, the thing that we need to talk about on that is probably a, a large percentage of the people that may want to participate in that don't have transportation.
Yeah.
When you talk about underage kids.
Yeah, and, and we have the capacity, that grant actually purchased vehicles that they use to drive around these schools. They have the capacity to transport a couple of kids, but not near the number of kids that need it. There's some value there.
So I wonder, I wonder if we can, I wonder if we can hook up with either, huh?
Elaine.
Well, Elaine or could be school system, it could be church or some churches would, would bus people that would want help. You know, it's.
Yes, there are some things that we.
I mean, it's only one day a week. But I think we need to, we need to reach, I mean, more than likely, a lot of your participants are going to be from the city of Marksburg. We're not reaching anybody in the county, not that it matters, but what does matter? But I think we need to make sure that, I hate to be a child that lives in Back Creek Valley. It's, man, I really want to go to that place, I really want, but nobody take me.
Yeah, I want to talk to some people, Christian is going to come to mine. We intend, in fact, we're opening bids next week, like a new group for 800 AM and Brown. And, and really that's the only thing that maybe still needs. Tim and Jack have put the inside, in fact, Tim put that in there. Very few changes will have to be made to payment of M Crouse Drive in Oak House. The recovery resources staff as well as the quick response staff. The two backside of the rooms that we had in, we had put in a non-load bearing wall. We're going to actually take that wall out of one of them and that's going to be a building that we're going to make available to the air power groups AA and NA. And, and we already have a plan figured out as far as restaurants and things like that. And we hope to make that happen late summer, early, early fall of the lateness.
Right. That was great.
So a lot of good work was happening. Any more questions about any of those programs?
Um, back to the Day Report Center, if the council recall, five years ago, one of your biggest areas of dissatisfaction with joint agreements we had was the availability of services.
Yeah, Tim was sitting in the corner, we only had five participants.
Correct. And it was usually daytime hours.
Right.
No evening sessions, no weekend sessions. You want to tell the council how many days a week you're open and what the hours are?
We're open Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Fridays, 8:05, Saturdays, 8:05. The only, the only people that we can't accommodate treatment for are the ones that claim they work seven days a week for 12 hours a day. And they're usually lying.
I don't know why. I swear to God, I'm not lying, Tim.
Well, you're ineligible.
So they are being the goals that this council has set.
Yeah.
And right there, I mean, Tim's working 6:00 to 8:00.
I'm proud to say that, you know, Tim and all of his staff, Kathy Butch has to be very delighted in where we've came in the last five years. I know she was very, her, all five foot nothing of her would come to us and ask what we were going to do. We was already working on things, but, and so she's got to be happy and, and stuff and we, we've worked hard. You've done a good job, superb job. One of the things we missed for years was involvement with the sheriff's department and the enforcement side. And now we have that with Sheriff Harmon and this council couldn't ask for anything more.
I've never had, you know, a brief conversation really with the last year, but we even share harmony fairly regularly. Now we're going to come before you here in a couple of weeks and talk to you about that program.
Well, there's one, one thing that the grant writers are talking to me about that's pretty impressive. Takes a couple of years to get, get to that point, but it, I think they'll be coming, you and them, I'm sure, will be coming to us and talking to us about that grant. The whole thing that we did, you know, the biggest thing you got to do in recovery is build trust. And one way to reach the children is to build trust. And part of that, part of your program that's got 11 participants on Thursday nights, I mean, I'd reach out to the boys and girls club with Stacy and say, hey, you got anybody in here that might want to participate in this? Because that's, they're, they're, they're trying to go somewhere where they feel safe.
We've got the space, we've got the staff.
Tim, of the total number of employees that you have off the top of your head, how many are in recovery?
Not only just people in recovery, but we have a number of the program graduates now on staff. And I actually kind of like bring, introduce you to. So let's see, there's seven, your recovery coaches, all of them, well, at the Day Report Center. In total, it's like 50%, all right? It's like 50%.
So I think the reason, and I knew, I knew the names for probably the past. I think the reason these programs are so successful is because, you know, for years, this council has always said, you know, you gotta, you gotta walk the walk, they have to talk the talk. But we've got about half of our full time workforce that know what it's like to be at the bottom. And I think that's why this program is.
Oh, I guarantee it is.
Because they breathing.
Right. And to know the way out of that hole.
That's correct.
Right, it can be done, look at, you know, they can always say, look at me. Look where I came.
I, I really appreciate the efforts that being done in the school system. That's where we break this cycle. I don't personally feel that you have enough folks, enough boots on the ground for that. I didn't hear anything about middle school that you're going to. And I understand, but you haven't had time, you don't have enough people to do that. But this cycle has got to be broken in our school system.
One of the grants that we're waiting to hear back from is the one that HIDA actually submitted on, on our behalf and you know, the agenda of all the substance abuse coaching programs that we have. I'm told that we should find out whether or not we will order that grant in late July, early August. And if we, if we are, that's, that, that's funding specifically for staff to work with juveniles. So we'll get, we'll get to grow that.
I think that the, he said Tomahawk intermediate, so that's pretty young, but I think, I think it's even younger than the middle schools in it. I mean, it used to be high school, then it went to middle school, now it's even before middle school. That these kids are seeing this and having to deal with it. And the big thing is, it'd be nice to be out in front of them and say, if this happens, this is what you can do.
Yeah, my, my wife teaches at Tomahawk Elementary and pretty much all of what she did this past school year was through video. And she's, she was horrified at some of the things that she saw and things that she heard in the background while this elementary aged child was sitting on the computer looking at it.
Right. Well, I told Jim Moore was the principal there and I'd go up, you know, our kids went there. And I'd talk to Jim, you know, when this, I'd pick our kids up sometimes after school and I would ask Jim, how do you, how can you, how hard is it for you to be able to let those kids leave that school and put them in the environment that you know they're going home to? And he said, it's hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's real hard. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you all.
All right, next on our agenda is Sheriff Nathan Harmon, part-time employees for tax office. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I appreciate you inviting me here.
You're always invited, welcome, sir.
I was telling the council, I'm hoping one day the smoke clears and I don't ever have to stand up here often asking for something, so.
You're here weekly.
I, I know. And, you know, while Tom and I are trying to improve the efficiency of sheriff support, we, we stumbled upon some additional polishing that needs to be done. And we've done an assessment with the tax office and in conversation with the tax office. Unfortunately, we lost a, a very seasoned employee. She had dedication to her family and then at a very untimely time, when we were ready to amp up, get busy, going to cook. So to lessen the blow, so to speak, I want to say thank you for approving Ms. Long's part-time hiring. While I was looking into this, and I try not to stick my nose in any other office's business or anything like that, but I do feel that there needs to be some adjustment to make things a little bit more comfortable for our part-time employees there at the tax office. And I always say that because of these part-time folks, Tammy and Casey, Tammy Hensler and Casey Miller, they bring a lot to the table in regards to previous experience with previous full-time employees with the tax office. So they're very multifaceted, they're very efficient in that office. And there's nothing that you can't ask of them to do to help our front staff to, to make it through this busy season. They collect taxes, they help with the gun permits, they interlane orders. They sort through three cups of mail a day and distribute that mail. They help with filing, we are currently going, we're trying to do a lot more paperless. So we're scanning permanents and renewals and stuff instead of keeping them in a phonic cabinet. They answer phone calls throughout the day. So they're, they're very, very, very busy. And so when I started looking at Ms. Hensler, who actually had been employed since 2003 and went part-time in 2015, I noticed that she was making $13.76 an hour. And then Ms. Miller, employed since 2005 and left in 2019 to again attend to family, but then came back in July of 2020, who also brings multiple years of experience, being paid at $10.50. And when I looked at the other offices, there, there are significant differences with the part-time hourly rate. I'm not here for that. The only thing I'm asking is, is, is that the commission consider raising both of these part-time employees to a standard $13.50 an hour? And if the commission would consider that, I would greatly appreciate that. Not only to compensate them for their experience, but also to be comfortable and competitive when we need things like this as far as the busy season, when we're all over in October is, you know, how are we attracting part-time folks who might be retired from the IRS and that, just be more competitive. So that's in total the reason why I'm asking for this change in the hourly rate.
So is your part-time staff, are they, are they generally working like a full day or a partial, partial day?
Generally, they're working a full day.
Yeah, yeah. Because my wife and I just had this conversation about part-time staff in some areas that already work four hours a day and make 10.50 an hour, you know, $40 to come in and work four hours, you know, so that, and, and we've been talking about our, our part, some of our part-time staff too throughout the county.
The good part is that it's, that they're, they're flexible when they're needed and called upon and show up, especially in the busy seasons. If they did only come in for maybe a, a six hour stint, they're actually working a four or five days in that now.
Well, we talked about, about the firefighters, to be honest with you, Sheriff, $12.50 to go and fight a fire on, on, on a part-time, eyes needed basis. There's, there's some issues with that, in my opinion. So now, let me ask you a question. We always thought from the outside that the tax office has busy season and not so busy season. We always, I'll, I'll say we always thought that the tax office could benefit and you as a budgetary and us as having part-time trained. could benefit and you as a budgetary, uh, and us as having part-time trained clerks during the busy season and scale down when it's not so busy. Is that, is it, or are they consistent all the time and it's just kinda like behind the doors? I mean, because, I mean, they're collecting all the, the revenue and everything else. So.
Yeah. So I, I can, I can always keep what I've seen since January and I can tell you that, that leading up to this particular month, I've seen the part-time folks and every time I've been in that office, they are in the back there, especially with my, uh, my, uh.
Yeah, I know. In the back they would be, I would think. But, I mean, the clerks up front, which collects the taxes coming in. Those windows would be, I'm thinking those would be more seasonal during the tax collection, the peak time, the two tech, peak times. Where we, it's kinda like restructuring that you just did. And basically, could that be looked at of, of restructuring, um, less full-time and more part-time? The only part of, as a part-time is they're not as dependable as a full-time. I'm just.
Yeah. No, no, I, I, I think it's definitely something we're looking into. Um, I'm very excited about a, a transition that you spoke to us earlier, with, uh, making, uh, having our staff be a lot more efficient using another, another building and, and seeing how that works. But, uh, absolutely, I think it's really looking.
So you say you lost a full-time person, right? Need to spend some time with the family. Is this basically within your budget then? Or are you looking not to replace the full-time or are you?
It's within, it's within the tax.
Okay. I asked the sheriff to come in, um, only because, as, as you know, West Virginia Code seven-seven-seven says that electors can set, is once you make that budget allocation, um, personnel, they can allocate that money any, any way they want. So the sheriff had indicated some, um, some variations in part-time wages with particularly some of the other electors. And we know that the assessor pays his part-time employees differently than he pays, than the circuit court pays hers, than the county court pays his. I think, in answer to your question, if you don't mind, Sheriff.
Sure.
Um, I think he'll be okay. Um, the part-time, the, the full-time employee that has left has been in an unpaid status for some time. Um, so since July first, that position has not collected wages or benefits. Um, but should he backfill that position sometime in the future? And, and there's no, there's no action, no budgetary action that's needed right now. As we get further into the fiscal year, um, this may, and I don't think it will because of the savings and benefits, um, this could require that we make some minor adjustments. Um, but for the, so for the current fiscal year, it would not, I'm, I'm ninety-nine, twenty-nine percent sure that it won't have a.
And that's what I was getting at. I mean.
It's next budget, next fiscal year budget.
But, I mean, right. But he could look at with, with his department head and say, hey, we can restructure this office. We can, we can have less full-time, hire more part-time, pay everybody better, right? I always said, uh, you know, you can, in some cases, the part-time, I mean, if you take the benefit package that a full-time employee gets with healthcare, vacation time, sick time, retirement and all that stuff, that's huge. It's about probably forty percent addition to their salary. You can, you can afford to pay a part-time person hourly, very competitive and still save money.
Yes. And I think it'd be a good opportunity to kind of do that assessment and all the transitions with Mr. Sheriff and Sheriff. Um, we have, we need to fill that position down the road. Uh, that is something I'm gonna be personally watching. How much more efficient can we make our office with the transition? That's something we'll be watching very closely as well. And if my numbers are right, I believe, um, the, the funds needed for this particular request that includes the salary, like is three thousand seven hundred thirty dollars.
That's, that's correct. So even if he delays backfilling the transition for three months.
You're still okay.
He'll, he'll still be budget.
And that's what you mean by the following year.
It could impact budget twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right.
And that's the only reason I asked the sheriff to come in. So the council was aware of that. But he doesn't need anything to plus.
No. The other thing too, um, Alan, the, the, the mechanism that the fire side, Randy has, that, that Mr. Sawyer does, that is automatic calling on part-time. What's that called?
Help.
But anyway, we, we could, we could offer that to, to anybody who wants to have a rotation of part-time employees. And basically, ro-go calls everybody and asks, you know, if you wanna work this day and then from these hours. So we have that software here to be able to utilize if you want. So if you may have twenty part-time employees and all of a sudden you start whoever from the last one and just go through the, constantly go through the rotation. And that way you don't have to have somebody, don't make all those calls all the time. Just don't say that. And, and a joking way too. I always enjoy you being here because anytime that we have conversations and we try to do something together, it seems like we only exhale in a better, much better way. So it's, it's delightful. I'm delighted to have you here.
I appreciate that, sir.
All right. Um, so, um, entertain a motion on the, uh, part-time employee tax office, uh, to increase the part-time staff to thirteen fifty an hour within the budget of, of the tax office.
I'm moved to go forward with the recommendation from the sheriff.
All right. Motion's been made. Any, um, do they have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a second. Uh, any discussion?
Do you think it's enough?
I think it's start.
Well, it was yesterday. I agree.
It's better than, yeah, better than yesterday. And, and I'm a big advocate of small whites of the apple and, and we'll, we'll do an assessment, uh, for the first time. Our entire department's staff is receiving employee evaluations. And, and I'm very, uh, very much an advocate of awarding things that the sheriff, uh, that they're accepting in that position. So I would love to come in here and ask for a lot more, but, um, thirteen fifty was expressed from the office. Uh, as I had a conversation with the leadership in the tax office and they felt that could be comfortable. Uh, not to say I won't be in here later on after, you know, doing the additional assessments and, and may potentially ask for additional part-time positions like we kind of ended on to today. But, uh, it's a start. I, I just know that, that the council a couple of years ago made a major step across the whole county and bringing everybody's salaries up. And, um, I give them great credit for that because it, that desperately needed to be done in a lot of these offices across the county. And I just wanna make sure that nobody falls behind again like, like they had in the past.
Well, Mr. Davis and I have been working on a recommendation to, to bring to the council here real soon about, um, you know, giving a pay raise. Um, and also I'm gonna want to check into part-time salaries. Um, and, uh, so that's being worked on. Um, probably have a recommendation within the next couple of weeks. Um, so.
That actually be made in two weeks.
Huh?
Two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. Couple of weeks.
And Sheriff, what typically would happen is if the council approves, um, pay increases, you'll get a memo signed by the council that says that they approve pay increases equal to X number of dollars. And it'll be broken out by salaries. Um, in your case, it'll be salaries per FICA and deputy retirement. And then it would be up to you to take the money that's allocated, and I'll use Department seven hundred for example, to take that lump sum and then you can give it out any, any way you want. So if you feel that you have a deputy that maybe is a little bit more deserving, or civilian personnel, it's maybe is a little bit more deserving. As long as you can stay within that lump sum allocation, you can, you can get that money out any way you see fit. Um, you know, we have some electors that follow the, whatever the county does, but we have two electors that I know of in particular that they, they'd like to make some adjustments. And we have one elected that she may not give employee any of it. Um, that's her, her call.
So, um, so we'll work on it. Or I said, Mr. Davis and I, he does all the work. I get some of the credit for the recommendation and the council will vote on it. But we, uh, Councilman Gokanar, as he said, I mean, in the last probably eight years, maybe seven years, we have, have the first couple, we've given three increases of pay. And then the biggest change that we did was the, for our civilian staff to go from thirty-five to forty-eight work week, which is like fourteen percent at one time. Um, and then we also took the lower table and gave them twice now, gave them a higher percentage of the increase than the upper. So, you know, lower got more, the middle got average and the, the upper got less. I think we got that pretty much in proportion because we gotta be careful because it would get it all congested here before long. But, um, um, yeah, we're, we're, we got called up. Now we gotta try to stay ahead. And each and every one of our employees in the county, they're well worth what we pay them. If they're not, they're not here long. So, all right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any reason for executive session?
No, we don't have any.
All right. Uh, any items from the public? Since there is none, Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, we recess.
We are recessed.